Good evening, welcome to tonight's forum hosted by the Boardman Chamber of Commerce. I'm Tori Grex, the Boardman Chamber CEO. We are going to have a fun evening. Tonight, we're going to provide a platform for the community here at the candidates running for the office of Morro County, Position 1. With the upcoming elections on May 21st, we'd like to just share what days those are. May 21st. Ballot being mailed out on May 1st. It's crucial for residents to make informed decisions when casting their votes. So we are here to provide this evening to you. As a public forum, we kindly request that the audience respects the candidates' time by refraining from talking during the forum, silencing your phones, check phones please now, and electronic devices. And if you need to take a call, we just ask that you step outside and far enough away that they can't be carried in here. Our agenda tonight is we go through our candidates. We will have three-minute opening statements. We will have two minutes per predetermined questions. Let you know, we have 18 questions tonight. We will not be taking questions from the audience or online. And we will have three minutes closing statements. So, to ensure fairness, we will be strictly adhering to the allocated times. Heather is going to be your time person. She'll give you one minute, morning, thirty seconds, morning, fifteen seconds, ten seconds, and one second. And then you'll hear the beep. Please be mindful of your candidates' other positions and so please don't carry on too far past that. And without further ado, let's get started. We're just going to work our way down the line right here. And we are going to start with Gus Peterson with opening statements.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is in fact Gus Peterson, and I am honored to present myself as a candidate for Morrow County Commissioner. I would like to start with saying thank you to all of you who are here. Thank you to the other candidates who are running, and thank you to the Boardman Chamber of Commerce for putting this on. I really appreciate the opportunity that we all have to get to speak with you. My background, I grew up on a farm just south of Ione where I went to school before going to college and getting degrees in agricultural science and political science with two goals in mind: to farm and to make my community a better place. My deep roots, I'm a fifth-generation farmer, and my education gave me the perspective and skills necessary to address the issues that we face. My leadership theory is rooted in collaboration, in community engagement, and practical solutions. The issues that we face in Morrow County are diverse, from hydrates in groundwater to a crisis with our ambulance service system to a rapidly changing local economy. Many of these issues boil down to a culture where words have been valued more than actions, where political victories have been valued more than doing what is right, and where gaining over our neighbor has been valued more than creating gains for our neighbor. It will not be so with me. I am dedicated to doing the right thing in all things, that the issues that we face may not be mere points of argument and contention, but opportunities to improve and to ensure that we as a county grow together for a better today and a better tomorrow. I am committed to improving infrastructure, enhancing educational opportunities, and to supporting small businesses. If I have a leadership vision that you can support, I look forward to working with you so that we together can make Morrow County a place we are all proud to call home. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And our next candidate would have been Catherine Reed. She apologized she is unable to attend. She had a personal obligation that she is attending. So she just sends her apologies. So, as that being said, we left her name there just so you guys are aware that she is a candidate. So we'll go on to Roy Drago Jr.
Hi, yeah, my name is Roy Drago. I am a current county commissioner with a win just a little over a year ago. One thing I've always learned, lots of things about the issues in the county. They are complicated, complex, difficult, and there are plenty of them. So, one thing I do like is that, you know, learning it from the other side, learning it from the government's side is much different than seeing it from the public side. Your hands are tied a little bit. So, I'm not a politician, and any of you that know me know that I'm not a politician. I have no political agenda whatsoever, and nothing to gain from this position. I'm here to do your work. I'm retired, I have no conflicts of interest because I have no businesses or anything to gain. I've lived here for over forty years, so obviously I love Morrow County, raised my children here, and, you know, just I love to be here. I love to fish, I love to hunt, I love to camp and side-by-side and all, from all those things that are right here in our back door. We have an amazing place that we live in. So, I think I would just like to ask that people would get their information through their own sources and try not to rely on social media platforms and all the half-truths and agendas that are out there. I just really ask that you do your own diligence and do your own research and come up with the answers that you come up with and not believe what everybody tells you. I think that's really important in this, not just in local government like we are, but across the nation, right? I mean, news is mostly half-truths and full lies for the most part. So, anyway, I just, I would just tell you that if you ever want to talk, I have an email at the county. You can go on there, you can send me an email, we can set up an appointment. Happy to talk one-on-one with groups and, you know, just, I'm here. So, I'm here to do your work, and I appreciate y'all being here, and I appreciate the chamber and all the other candidates here. I appreciate them too. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. We're going to go on to Richard and Rick and Drake. Which way would you like to be addressed?
Your choice. Rick is fine, Richard's fine.
Okay, thanks. I'll go with Rick.
Even Mr. Drake is fine.
Okay. There you go. Please proceed.
In case you didn't know, Richard Drake, running for Morrow County Commissioner, Position 1. I thought I'd just take a few minutes and kind of tell you about myself. I was born and raised in Morrow County, grew up on a small family ranch in Upper San Hollow, which is south end. I'm a graduate of Hepner High School, class of 1973, do the math. Graduate of Blue Mountain Community College with an AA degree, graduate of Central Washington University, BA degree, graduate of Eastern Oregon University with an MTE. As long as a longtime Morrow County resident, I am in a prime position to make intelligent, informed decisions for you, our citizens. Number one, I experienced personally nitrate contamination in my own personal Hermiston resident. I lived in sixteen years in Hermiston. In the mid-1980s, I was forced to offer private well and under city municipal water due to, you guessed it, high nitrates. Two, I'm concerned that, for a lack of a better name, I'll call it the Amazon Effect on our county. What is the best use of our valuable resources? Available land post-proximity to already existing infrastructure, transportation, including interstate highway, rail service, both north and south, as well as east and west, water transportation, not to mention the availability of close and abundant fresh water and power? To have all those existing and in many cases ready for services almost unheard of in bare land? Here's a question I have yet to get a good answer on. Why was the existing ASA, ambulance-approved system so quickly abandoned? Are there hidden agendas? I don't know. I have many residents in South County say they are afraid to call 911. They will self-transport in case of emergency. So how safe is that? I will just mention one more thing in passing. Where is the best placement for our new county courthouse? Experience. I was raised on a small Eastern Oregon dryland wheat ranch, yes, up at San Hollow. I've watched much of our county blossom into with the introduction of irrigation in the sixties, early sixties. I've watched the Port of Morrow grow into, I joke occasionally, a rowboat dock to the multi-billion-dollar industry it is right now, serving the entire world. I remember when the John Day locks were closed for the first time, creating this vast lake behind it. I helped survey the electrical power for the first several circles between here and Irrigan. I was over twenty years in the building trades, last fourteen as a successful general contractor in Uutila and Morrow Counties. I know how important cash flow is. I know how important a budget is. I taught school, even here, for nine years. Morrow County leaders need, Morrow County needs leaders who are not beholden to special interest groups or businesses. Leaders who will watch out for the citizens of Morrow County and put their interests first.
Thank you.
I am that leader.
Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you candidates for those opening statements. We are going to move into the predetermined questions now. And like I said, we have eighteen of them. We are going to rotate each time through. Gus, will you start with one? Junior, two? Rick, three? So just rotate through like that each question. So, first question. Could you share a bit about the supporters of your campaign and why their endorsement is significant to you?
All right, well, the supporters of my campaign are, well, my friends and my family and the people that I am in community with, and that matters to me because, well, I'm living my life with them. And to have people who support you, who know you well, and personally, that's the kind of, that's the kind of reassuring bump that I often need when I am deciding that it's a risk worth taking to put myself up here and be nervous in front of all of you because I think it's worth doing and it's the right thing to do. And it means the world to me to have my friends and my neighbors and my community members think that I'm somebody who should at least be at the table.
Thank you. Junior, would you like me to repeat it?
Okay. Well, my campaign supporters are a lot of them here. My family's with me. I have lots of friends, I have lots of people in business that I've worked with and that I know. I'm looking out here and I know ninety percent of everybody here, and I would like to think that ninety percent of the people here are supporting me, so thank you for that. And, you know, it means a lot to me throughout the whole county. I moved here and lived in Hepner for a short term. My dad was the sheriff for twenty-five years. I know lots of people in all areas of the county. I'm friends with lots of people in all areas of the county, and I, you know, I appreciate them and they appreciate me for what I'm doing, so I hope that we can continue that.
Thank you. Rick, would you like me to repeat and repeat it?
Okay. So, supporters, I know a few of you here. Thank you for attending, listening to us. I did work here for nine years, so I have that as a basis. I've talked to a couple of my ex-students here, and they actually support me. Who does not support me is my brother. He says you're dumb. Okay, so I'll forgive him for that. But obviously, the town of Hepner, and I am retired, so I've had a chance to walk the streets, shake hands, and got nothing but positive. This is my first endeavor into politics, so I am a little bit unsure of where to go first, and I have had both knees replaced in the last few months, so I have not been able to go door-to-door like I had hoped to. But everyone I talk to knows there's trouble. Everyone I talk to wants somebody to listen to them and make them feel like they indeed are listened to. So I can't find anybody that doesn't support me. So I can't tell you who does not support me, but thank you for your support. Well, I didn't ask Roy's family in here, so, anyway, thank you for coming and listening to us tonight.
Perfect, thank you. Junior, here's the next question. What is your assessment of the present ambulance service model in Morrow County, and do you believe it adequately addresses the requirements of the community?
Are you talking about the interim or where we're building?
It just says present ambulance service.
Present.
Present.
We can hear the ambulance.
So, you know, it's a big county. It's a tough endeavor. The interim ambulance provider right now is doing the best they can, and from what I'm seeing, they're doing a decent job there. Doing full coverage, all their response times are well within the state, the state numbers, and comparatively with the past one they're there. That being said, the ASA providers have not been chosen yet. The proposals will come out in the next ninety days, and there will be a true provider ASA plan on the table. And hopefully, both parties that are in the proposal process will put in for good plans and they will be in the best position and get Morrow County the best ambulance service they've ever had.
So that's a really tough question because I've dealt with that service forever. I watched my dad be brought in when I was twelve. DOA. And so it's real near and dear to my heart. I questioned why we got an interim provider when we already had an ASA plan and I got signed documents right here with me that was good and in fact by the council's lawyer. He said what they had in place was good and legal. We could have just carried that through for a few months until we got a resolution and something that then could go out to bid and out to the community. So, in my community, we have had some issues. We've had long times to get to the service area that they needed to be. We've had an ambulance stuck, and that's just from people not knowing the terrain. You know, take a two-wheel-drive ambulance when it's got a pot of snow out and it's cold. So, I have mixed emotions about this, and it just seems like we could have bought some time with a little infusion of cash for the Morrow County Health District to carry on with their service without the huge interruption. And I've got people in my community say that they will not call 911, that they will self-deliver to where they feel safe. That really, really concerns me. Thank you.
Could you repeat the question? What is your assessment of the present ambulance service model in Morrow County? Do you believe it adequately addresses the requirements of the community?
I think the current situation has been a fumbling of all. I think if we were in a situation where we needed to create a new ASA agreement, then we should have continued under the agreement that we had because it was a contract between the county and the health district. They were reliant on that in order to provide services, and to me, if I was somebody who was going to make a contract with a county to provide services and I heard that the county pulled the rug out from under them, that's going to severely impact my desire to work with that county. I think if we were going to make changes, the right way to do it would have been to continue on as we were and to build out a new plan for the two years when that plan would have come up due. That is the way that I would have addressed that situation. As far as whether or not it should be just one provider or multiple providers, the way that it ought to be done is providers ought to be making their best proposals, and then whoever has the best proposal wins. I do not feel that that has been the way that this has been handled. It seems like one provider has been favored over the other, and that's not the right way to do it.
Thank you for that. All right, we'll go on to the next question. This is going to start with Rick. In the event of a disagreement with other commissioners, how do you plan to navigate and address conflicting viewpoints on important matters?
You know, H.O. Mencken said something to this, and I'll quote this in my closing statements, that to every complex problem, there is an answer that seems simple but wrong. We have to do the work. We have to get the answers. Of course, conflicts will come up, but we must stick at the table. We can't just throw in the towel. One of the situations I would like to see resolved is I would like to see another, two more commissioners added. Because right now, if we three were commissioners and Roy was my bud, we could carry the entire county however we decided to. That's an issue. We need two more commissioners in there to help resolve that. Is it the ultimate answer? No. No, we have to be flexible. I will have to compromise at times. Somebody else will have to compromise at times. But we must look at the entire county. You can't just be selective in whether it's Boardman, Irrigan, Ione, Lexington, Hepner, South County OHV Park. It doesn't matter. It all has to be a cooperation between all three of us at the right time right now. And then, do I dare say this? I feel like commissioners, do your job. You hired a county manager, Matt Jensen, he's doing a wonderful job, but it's not his job. You need to make the decision and then present to him or her what that decision is, and then let them carry out what your decision is. Thank you.
Gus? Can I reiterate?
Yeah.
In the event of a disagreement with other commissioners, how do you plan to navigate and address conflicting viewpoints on important matters?
I think, you know, I addressed that I want to be the kind of leader that looks at conflict as something where we can look towards improvement together. I don't want to continue to sow division. We have enough of that in our world. I don't think we need to be adding anymore. So when we are in a position of disagreement, there's three of us. And so I will do my best to bring my view to the fore, and I think I can be pretty persuasive, but if I am the odd man out, then I will go along with the decision of the group because it is a board of commissioners and it is the board that has authority, not any single one commissioner. It's not about us as individuals, it's about us as a board. So it's important to work together as a team even when we are in disagreement because our power is not based on us as individuals, but in the power that is invested in the board as a whole.
Thank you. Could I repeat it?
Yes, so, being in this position, I probably have a little bit of advantage. And I would be concerned if we all agreed all the time, right? So, I mean, it is just as Gus said, it is a board. We are one. If you have a problem with one of our commissioners, you have a problem with the whole board. So, you shouldn't be picking apart individuals. It is a board. We are one in how we come to conclusion. So if I have a conflict, if I don't agree with one or two of the other ones, I will just do my best to be heartfelt and tell them why I believe what I believe. And if they have a different feeling, then we'll agree to disagree, we'll move on to the next item, and if I'm the one, like if I'm the one man out, I'm going to get on board because that's what you do. You get on board with the board.
Perfect, thank you. We're going to go to Gus for the next one. Understanding the time commitment required, how do you plan to manage your responsibilities as commissioner alongside any other obligations you may have?
So, I'm a farmer, and I think one of the most important aspects of leadership is being prepared. If you show up to a meeting and you are not prepared, then you are not leading to the fullest of your capabilities. As a farmer, I can prepare in advance, and that's how I intend to manage my time in a way where I can continue to farm as well as be an effective commissioner. While I'm sitting on the tractor, I can do an awful lot of reading and an awful lot of listening so that when I show up to meetings, we can make the most of our time. Because when meetings happen, they are forgetting things done, and you should show up to the meeting knowing what's going on so that you can make the best of everybody's time. And that is how I intend to make sure that I can meet all of my commitments.
Thank you. Junior?
So, when I sat on the city council, I was a full-time employee. That was a fairly important position, and people's lives were in my hand at work, so I had to be focused on work before I could be as a city councilperson. There were times when I was in city council meetings and I was not prepared. I would not have taken this position and shouldn't have taken that position without more thought about that. When I took this position, I was retired, so I am able to be prepared, and I am prepared. I, you know, we're fortunate, we get our, we get our package usually on Friday or Monday before our meeting is on Wednesday, so we do have time to go through and be prepared for that, so.
Being retired is a benefit.
I can definitely be ready and be there for the job.
Could I repeat it?
So I'm kind of like Roy over here. I'm retired, which gives me a little bit more time, at least I thought it would. But yes, I do have the time, I can be flexible. The one thing that I really am looking forward to this is being out amongst the people. And I don't see our commissioners, at least on my end, out amongst the people to find out what their response is to me. As far as doing the research on the problem that is presented to us, if we are given it, I'm a voracious reader. I love to research, I love to read, I love to find answers to problems. And so I would depend on that in my, you know, and it's not like I haven't done it before. I went after a master's degree at fifty-four years old. I'm not afraid to do the work. I'm not afraid to put in the time, not afraid to do the work, and I'm not afraid to lead by example and listen.
Thank you. Junior, you have the next one. What action do you propose for the old Kinsu Mill Site, and how do you plan to execute them if elected?
Well, I, that's a good question because there's a lot of, there's a lot of great ideas that could happen at the mill site, one of them being the circuit court. But with that being said, there's also, and anybody who's lived in the South County for any time at all knows, that there are lots of, lots of hidden gems that are around that area that could definitely be stumbling blocks for what can be built there and what it's going to take. I fear that if we tried to put the courthouse there, about the time they did the first core sample, we would have to move. I think that there's potential there for perhaps a fairgrounds. I would be, I would be more than happy to get behind moving the fairgrounds to the mill site because I think it's a better location. It's definitely right on the way into town, it's got more room for parking. There again, you're struggling with how do you get water and sewer, same as you would with the courthouse. So, it's a, it's been, it's been an endeavor that the port's worked on for a long time. I don't think it'll ever see industry there more than what you've got just because it's just so far removed. So it's going to have to be recreational, and I think that we can be very creative and make that a great recreation site.
Thank you.
I think we have to be careful about what won't go there. If we can get this site ready, for one thing, right now it's in flood zone. We've got to do something about that, or nothing's going to go there. You can pasture your goat down there, but unless it's just a parking space, you can't build any sort of infrastructure. It's got to be out of the flood zone. That is on the west side of the highway. You've got to have water, got to be drinkable water, potable water. You've got to have sewer there, whether it is piped back up or another substation or some sort, but with a lagoon, I need to be able to expand. But I can see it, I've worked there. I didn't work at the mill, but I've done a lot of work on those buildings. It's a wonderful place for industry, but somebody's going to have to get creative. I think I've got a pretty good view of what could happen down there, but we do have to get cooperation within our county and within the entities involved. Would someone, I don't know, maybe with fiber optic now, which we have, maybe a Google could go there. Wouldn't that be something? Hepner, Oregon with a Google in it, or an Amazon, or something of that nature. So there's multitudes of opportunity there. It was a mill site. At one time, it had two mills, had plywood mill there for how many years? For fifty, sixty, seventy years or more, very prosperous. However, there's some residual problems of that. So if we're willing to face those problems and work on them and get, overcome them, then the sky's the limit. The sky is literally the limit of what can be done there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. What actions do you propose for the old Kinsu Mill Site, and how do you plan to execute them if elected?
Well, I talked about collaboration, and I am going to be emphatic about that throughout the rest of this. We need to work with the port and with interested parties to ensure that we get that site as cleaned up as we can. I think that it has a great deal of potential and that we as a county should be looking at what are things that we could do that strengthen the county as a whole. You know, we're a very strong agricultural community. What if we had some sort of animal processing plant in Hepner? And we could process animals actually locally. You know, that kind of thing would make a big difference. There's an opportunity where Oregon is trying to do fused lumber. They haven't totally worked it out yet, but the state wants that as a high priority. The state wants housing built, and they are willing to pay people who are being creative and create housing that can be moved around the state. There are opportunities, but we will get none of them if we are not aggressive in our pursuit of them. If we just sit on our haunches at If we just sit on our haunches, absolutely nothing will happen. And that's true of every issue that we face.
Thank you. And I would just like to say thank you for all of you again joining the Department Chamber of Commerce hosted forum. Just as a reminder, I see some candidates coming in. We are also hosting the Umati Lomoro Judicial Candidate Forum that will take place right after this. So you'll be seeing some people coming in soon. We'll take a short pause for the cause and we will transition into them. So just as that, as they are already, we are just a little shy of halfway right now. So that being said, we'll go on to our next question. How do you propose to distribute Chris dollars differently, if at all, from the current allocation system? And that's for Rick.
Well, that was a can of worms. Who presents? Who's buddies? I don't want to poke the bear so to speak, but I've not been real pleased with where those monies have gone nowadays. So somehow or another, we've got to get more equal input into what the entity is that wants those Chris dollars and then who is responsible for handing them out. I would like to see a total reorganization of it, but I don't have a clear picture of what would happen. So I would have to do some investigation onto surrounding counties, what they do for, I don't know what they're called in those other counties, but say investment zones. What do they do? And how can we get a more responsible, more just way of spreading those dollars around? Rather than, I feel like this is my buddy, maybe I should support that. This is my, oh, I can see that go a long ways. I don't like him. I don't like that. I'm not saying that is what happens, but from outside appearance looking in. And it's hard to get inside those and be at the right place at the right time so you know what decisions are being made. I was in many respects offended when the health district went after a mere $600,000 and money was put other places when people's lives were at stake. Something has to be done. I will work and I will find the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Gus?
Yeah, I do.
How do you propose to distribute Chris dollars differently, if at all, from the current allocation system?
Well, I think the current allocation system is actually pretty good because there are people sitting at that table who disagree with each other. And I think that's actually a really important thing. If everybody agreed right off of the bat, then I think we would have room for perhaps more poor decisions and then unfair distribution, the way that we've got it right now. There are people at that table who pretty strongly disagree with each other. I can speak pretty confidently to that. And as far as distribution of that goes, nobody's ever going to be fully happy, but it's really incredible to have as a tool that we are able to use that and that it can be redistributed. And I am just amazed that we in Marl County have those tools available to us. A lot of other small counties around here, if you want to look, they don't have anything like this. They don't have any opportunities like this. It's a great tool to have and it will always have opportunity to improve. But so long as we have enough diverse voices at the table, then it's going to be handled about as best as it's going to be.
Thank you.
So Chris dollars are somewhat regulated by business organs as to how they can be distributed. All the taxing districts get their percentage according to their tax district. The affected tax districts are the ones who get the money because they're the ones who are feeling the pains from the industry that's here. So again, there's a lot of money and with a lot of money comes a lot of responsibility and with a lot of responsibility comes a lot of speculation. There aren't any buddies getting any money from Chris, trust me. They go to the people that it needs to go to. And it's a great thing. The Chris dollars in our area are very good. We wouldn't have a tax base even a tenth of what we have without the Chris and the special districts. Really reap the benefits from that.
Thank you. Gus? If elected, what is the one significant change or action you would prioritize? And how do you justify its importance to the residents?
Going to an awful lot of meetings. I think that every candidate you ever hear will always say that we are going to listen to people. Nobody's ever going to say, we're going to ignore people while they're campaigning. Nobody's going to do that. But if we are actually going to listen to people, we have to be present. There's no way you can listen to somebody if you aren't where they are. So the first thing that I would do in terms of how I would lead is I'm going to go to an awful lot of school board meetings. I'm going to go to an awful lot of city council meetings. I'm going to go to an awful lot of church meetings and any other organization meetings that are in the community because if we are going to actually represent people, we have to be there with them.
All right, David again. If elected, what is the one significant change or action you would prioritize? And how do you justify its importance to the residents?
So we, meetings, I guess I'll just touch on that real quick. We all, all the commissioners had a bunch of meetings to go to. So good luck getting to more ones than we already do. But you know, the action that I think that we need to take full front center is childcare. That's the one thing that I would like to see us get more involved with in the county is in the childcare. And everybody's struggling from it. Housing is another issue. So you know, I think getting involved in the real family-oriented issues is going to be, is going to be where the best action is going to be put today.
Thank you.
So I agree with Gus. You've got to be present. You've got to be in the midst of those people that you represent. But you can't negate having to do the research. It's a time-consuming job. I have heard some of the commissioners say, it's not uncommon to spend 50 hours, 60 hours, occasionally maybe 70 hours a week. So as a retired person, I'm able to do that. But I would go to the school board meetings, the council meetings. I would like to see two more, like I alluded to earlier, two more council members because that would just give two more people a little bit broader vision, a little bit bigger base, that we could meet all those obligations. I would love to see more help to the schools. As a teacher for 18 years, I know the struggle it is. And you know, as an outsider looking in before I started teaching school, it was, oh, they waste the money here, they waste the money there. Well, if you're going to go after that, then you better go Salem because Salem dictates what the schools have to do. And DC dictates what Salem has to do. So you better go up the food chain a little bit before you start bragging about schools wasting too much money because they're covering their bases pretty well.
Thank you. Junior, you have this one. I want to move this as quickly as I can. Okay. Regarding health education and groundwater awareness, what responsibilities do you believe the county should have? And do you see any areas where improvements could be made?
Yes, I do see areas of improvement could be made. I think the county needs to be very involved in the outreach. I think our health department has been pretty much knee-deep into that. The issues with the water nitrates and the outreach and getting to the people, it's not as easy as one would think. We're at about 40% of the wells tested in the county. A lot of people don't want their wells tested. A lot of people would just leave me alone. A lot of people don't trust the government. A lot of people have no trespassing signs. A lot of people have big dogs. So it makes it difficult to get out and do some of the outreach. Mailers is one way and we've done lots of mailers. You know, we're working forward right now. We're getting help from the state entities, getting help from the federal government. And we're in the process of building an outreach, an engineering, and then action. So we don't want to get ahead of the game and go fix something and make a problem worse than it already is. We need to know that the solutions aren't going to create more problems.
Rick?
This is a huge issue and it's going to be expensive regardless of what you do. I don't know how you flush nitrates out of ground. I don't know if it's even possible. Has anybody tested it? I don't know that either. One of the things that I get so frustrated with, and I was thankful that Boardman the other day helped have a roundhouse, open house thing on the water nitrate. I think it was last Friday. Thank you, Boardman, whoever was responsible for that because it was somewhat informative on my side. The thing that really bothers me is we push this down the road. I've known about, I got kicked off in 1985, I think it was. So for the last 35 years, we've had this issue and nobody's approached it. So what do we do? We have to get water to these people. We cannot let them continue to consume this contaminated water. How do we do that? I can see various scenarios. I can see a thousand gallon tank put in here, serve a couple of residences. A lot of them are barred. That's not possible. We could maybe cut a main line here that might serve two or three houses and put a supply tank there. It's going to be expensive. It's going to be expensive. And it's a long-term problem, but we have to fix it.
Thank you. Gus? Okay, regarding health education and groundwater awareness, what responsibilities do you believe the county should have? And do you see any areas where improvements could be made?
I think this has been a problem for 30 years. At this point, education and outreach were behind the ball. Are we going to wait another 30 years before we take some sort of definitive action? I was also at that nitrate meeting at Riverside High School and I was extremely unimpressed with the state. It seemed an awful lot to me like words and not action. How long do we have to wait before we start actually doing things? It seemed like the state wanted more data. It's been 30 years. How long do you need to collect data? From everyone that I have talked to and I have done an extensive amount of reaching out, the nitrates in the groundwater aren't going to be fixed in the next 30 years. Even in the best-case scenario, they're not going away. So to me, that changes how we approach the situation. And if we value people's health and we want people to have clean water, then we need to be approaching the situation from that mindset. It's already behind the ball to be telling people, hey, you've probably got nitrates in your groundwater. We need to be at the point where we're saying, these are the solutions that we're looking at long-term to ensure that you have safe drinking water. How I think the county should be approaching this is with a water district so we can do this at full scale rather than trying to do this piecemeal, part by part, and probably missing people along the way because it's not going away and it's time that we started taking action.
Thank you. Next question is going to be with Junior. Reflecting on the current commissioner's Oh yeah, Rick, sorry. Rick, sorry. Yep, my bad. Reflecting on the current commissioner's decisions, which initiatives or projects do you appreciate most and why?
Can you just repeat that one more time?
Reflecting on the current commissioner's decisions, which initiatives or projects do you appreciate most and why?
Wow. Wow. I'm not sure that I could pick one that I was even really very proud of. I thought the health district, specifically the ambulance, would have been a perfect time for them to initiate collaboration and extend the existing contract out, similar to what Gus said. And then to institute, to show them that they were listening, to show the people that they were listening. Previous commissioners have attacked the water issue and it's just, I can't see a direction on the one that the existing commissioner right now, it seems like they're kicking the ball to other entities rather than grasping it and saying, we are now going to take this and we're going to carry this and we're going to get a solution for these people. Like Gus said again, it's a 30-year issue and it's probably going to be another 30 years unless we really get aggressive to it. The courthouse issue, I'm not sure whether they're pushing that because they want to move it or, you know, $12 million would build a building, but they've got 24, 25 million. I would think in Heffner, Oregon, you could find a place for 25 million to build a very, very, very adequate state-spec building somewhere in that building. So to pick out a specific problem, a specific situation that I think they handled well, it's tough for me to do that. And I wish it was not.
Reflecting on the current commissioner's decisions, which initiatives or projects do you appreciate most and why?
I'm afraid that I'm in agreement with Rick. I'm not because I don't love the decisions that have been made and I really disagree with the way that they have been made. If, I wish that I could say differently. I will say this. I really appreciate the current board of commissioners in how they deal with people. I have not known them or heard of them being insulting or resolving in name-calling. They have, I disagree with them. But they have, I think, done their best to ensure that they are making their decisions based on what they think is the correct thing to do and not trying to be divisive. And for that, I am incredibly appreciative and I wish more of our leaders were focused on leading that way.
Thank you. Junior? Reflecting on the current commissioner's decisions, which initiatives or projects do you appreciate most and why?
So I guess I got to be defensive here. So every one of the issues that we have in front of us today, none of the commissioners over here created. They were all kicked down the road until we got there. So I'm pretty proud of the fact that we have not let people bully us into pushing it down the road again. We stood up. We're doing the work. None of them are easy. They're all very difficult. We are working forward to take care of all of the issues. Ambulance service was a, there hadn't been a legal ASA plan since 1998, regardless of what you're told. I have the thought, Mr. Drew, that. We were working off of an antiquated ASA. It had been hijacked. It needed to be fixed. It needed to come back to the county as the control. That's what we're doing. The water issues, everybody says that 30 years is not even close. Gus said it's been here for 50 to 60 years. I have documentation of 1957 that shows that there were nitrates in the water of 57 parts per million. The courthouse, we didn't do the courthouse. The courthouse is also a, is being, it's very stipulated what you have to do by state standards with that. You have to have a certain amount of area. Doesn't matter where we put it. Heffner is Main Street and Two Hills. Sorry, that's what it is. There's very limited places we can put the courthouse. The site we thought would work the best, you know, there were people who were disappointed there. So we're still looking at different areas to put that, working hard on that. We've got a lot of issues. So I'm just proud of the fact that the commissioners have worked forward on every issue as fast and as best as we can.
Thank you. Next question is Gus. If you had to choose between prioritizing tourism, a bedroom community, or a driving economy, which would you choose and why?
Sorry, what was the last part?
If you had to choose between prioritizing tourism and a bedroom community or a driving economy, which would you choose and why?
Driving economy.
Driving economy.
Driving economy.
Driving economy, like what?
Business.
Business. How you grow your local business.
Well, I would pick driving economy. I, I think from a personal perspective, bedroom communities, I, they have an awesome feel. I come from my own, okay? It's probably pretty close to that. But if you don't have jobs, that really negatively impacts the kind of community that you can have. You know, if people can't make a living, it's really hard to have the kind of community that people want to live in. There are certain negative impacts to having a driving economy where we put the economy above all else. But it's really hard to have all the other things if you do not have an economy that can help drive those other things. I would love to have communities where people can feel like this is the place that I want to be forever and part and part of that is going to be because they've got jobs.
Thank you. Junior?
Again?
If you had to choose between prioritizing tourism and a bedroom community or a driving economy, which would you choose and why?
I guess I would have to say it depends on the part of the county we're talking about. Um, obviously, driving economy has worked very well in our end of the county. We have, uh, a myriad of transportation. It's, it's located where that works. Um, there's lots of big farms, central and south county, that have been there for generations. Um, it's what works. We shouldn't be looking to, to put a economy down there that would sustain the population. I just find it hard to believe that anybody's gonna want to take their, their industry that far off of the travel route and try to grow Hepner into an industrial mecca, right? I think, I think that, that area is gonna be well-served with what we can for, for prosperity, but we need to look at tourism, right? I think tourism is a big thing on the south end of the county. You have beautiful mountains, you have the O H V park, you have parks. Um, tourism is, is everything is important, right? And we need those traveling dollars coming in. Uh, we actually make a lot of money on tourism. So it's, it's, it's a good business. It can be its own business model. Uh, bedroom communities, unless you're talking about retirement markets, I don't see the bedroom community thing so much. But, but I, I believe that tourism is a driving economy and, and should be also included in there.
Thank you. Rick?
I'll agree as Roy. The tourism is a great economy. Um, I lived in the Bay Area, California, for about two years, and the downtown of Venetia, about three thousand people, and it had a huge tourism business on one thing. It was a yard sale, twenty-four, seven in the place. But it was a high-end yard sale, and I use that term loosely. It was, it was a lot of collector things in there. And yes, it was a wonderful community, but there were times when the economy's down, guess what? The streets were bare in Venetia. So is that something you can build a community on? I don't think so. Um, tourism in general, Roy talked about the O H V park, it's wonderful. It is, I, I watched millions of dollars of RVs and side-by-sides and four-wheelers go up the road 'cause I live right by the, by the highway. And it's wonderful, except when the economy goes down. So you have to have a stable business that is there. Um, we're talking about putting in another, uh, what is it? Uh, ten thousand acres of solar farm. That's ten thousand acres of precious, precious ground that's taken out of commission. And if you've read anything, you talk to the grain horse, and they're all but panicked about it. So while, and, and I can appreciate the farmer wanting to put that three or four times the money he would make on a good year farming into his pocket in something that he just stands there and looks at those and, and, you know, pats himself on the back for a decision well made. But we have to have the economy. You have to have that base that is on a business established and produces something other than joy or pleasure.
Thank you. This one's for Junior. Have you been involved in bringing forth any charges of ethics violations or lawsuits against board, against boards or elected officials? And how do you intend to uphold ethical standards if elected?
One more time.
Have you been involved in bringing forth any charges of ethics violations or lawsuits against boards or elected officials? And how do you intend to uphold ethical standards if elected?
No, I have not brought any ethic charges or brought any lawsuits towards anybody. Um, it, I will say that I see there are some lawsuits out there, lots of ethics complaints. Um, most of them tend to go nowhere. Uh, our, our ethics commission's pretty limited on what they can actually do. So I think they're more of a, I think they're more of a, of a punch than they are anything else. They're just, they're just there to, to get after people. Um, lawsuits can be, or can be needed, but the lawsuits I see that are going aren't now completely put a standstill to any progress that we've done with our water system. Um, and, and you can't blame the people 'cause now they don't even wanna talk to you or cooperate at all because they're afraid of anything they say or do will be held against them. Then a civil lawsuit, I'm disappointed that it went to that point. Um, but no, I'm sure I have not been involved in any lawsuits or ethics complaints.
Thank you. Rick?
Can you repeat that?
I can. Have you been involved in bringing forth any charges of ethics violations or lawsuits against boards or elected officials? And how do you intend to uphold ethical standards if elected?
Boy, oh boy, transparency is such a big issue on whatever decision you are investigating or working on or making. You have to be above board on everything. And, and in some respects, if you, if you follow AI at all, guess what? Eventually, they're gonna be able to read your mind if you indeed get that implant or whatever it is in your brain. And I realize I'm getting a little futuristic here, but it's something you have to think about. Um, as far as have I been involved? No. Have I brought any charges? No, absolutely not. Um, but I, I have a close acquaintance that's been involved in a couple of lawsuits, and one of the things his lawyer said was, sometimes it's the only way you get people's attention. So regarding this water issue, what if there had been a coalition of some sort of twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred and fifty families that got together and said, look, we have a problem here that we didn't create and yet we are victims to. We need to bring this to their attention. How? Well, let's see if we can get a lawyer in here to see this. Could we have solved this problem, you know, five, ten, fifteen years ago? Possibly. I don't know. But, uh, no, I have not been involved. Um, I hope and pray that I never have to be. But again, transparency, transparency, transparency.
Have you been involved in bringing forth any charges of ethics violations or lawsuits against boards or elected officials? And how do you intend to uphold ethical standards if elected?
All right, I have not been involved in bringing charges against anybody ever. Yeah, put that all the way. Uh, as far as how I intends to hold, uphold my own ethical standards, uh, I think ethics, particularly in a leadership position, are mostly gonna come down to issues of conflict of interest. Uh, and conflict of interest is actually, I think, a little more complicated than we often give it credit for. Uh, how I think ethics should be handled is our leaders should have shared interests in the groups that we are leading. Uh, my example that I'm going to give is, uh, when you find out that a senator or representative doesn't live in the district that they are representing, how does that make you feel? Doesn't really make me feel good. When we have elected leaders, they need to have a share in the communities that they lead. Their ethics need to have an actual impact on the lives that they have. Uh, when we make decisions, they need to be about us as a whole, not about you or not about me, they need to be about us. And that's how I will handle ethical issues is by looking at them as a we thing and not an individual thing.
Rick? What motivates you the most to run for this position?
I have to say there's one item that motivated me the most. When I knew I'd gotten kicked off of, uh, high-nitrate water in nineteen eighty-five and then I realized that these people down here, it was hard for me not to think that this was indeed some sort of race-motivated. I'm sorry, I have to say that. I have a Spanish-speaking, wonderful wife down here. That is an ace in the hole at my sleeve. We can communicate with those people. But I have to say that high nitrate, I got angry when I realized the extent of the pollution that we have somehow fostered. That's a big word, have we? Or let's slide underneath the rug or wherever. But certainly, the water was the big issue for me. And then when you throw the courthouse on that, you know, I read old books and, and I read in an old book not very long ago, in fact, it was yesterday, that said, do not move the ancient monuments. That courthouse in Hepner has been there for over a hundred and twenty years. A hundred and twenty-one years as of June this year. It needs to stay in Hepner. It needs to stay in Hepner.
Yes, and the next one. What motivates you the most to run for this position?
Uh, I have felt called to leadership as long as I can remember, and a big part of me moving back to Ione was that I wanted to give back to the community that had helped make my life great. And I see Marl County as an extension of that community. Uh, in terms of other motivations, something that has been motivating me to be involved in this for several years now is that I am sick and tired of fighting. Our county is too small to spend all of our energy and resources fighting one another. Good grief, we're smaller than most cities as a whole. That's the reality, and we spend so much energy and effort not being united that that motivates me the most. That I want to see Marl County act together and act like we are neighbors because even though many of us live miles apart, in reality, we're the closest thing that we've got to neighbors. And I view you all as my neighbor, and I want to serve you well.
What motivates you the most to run for this position?
So right now, what motivates me is that, you know, like I said, we had lots of issues that we've dove into headfirst. Um, and I wanna continue and see that through. It may not look like we're doing what we're supposed to be doing to some. I hope others see that we are in it full, strong, and doing everything we can to fix all of the issues. So my motivation right now is to continue with what I started for the last year and to see it through and, and get things done. We have not been done for sixty years, thirty years, twenty years. It's been a long time with these things hanging out there, and I think that, you know, that the board that you have today is working hard towards those, and I hope to remain in that position so I can continue that.
Thank you, and I would just like to say thank you. We are here, uh, listening to our candidates for the Marl County Commissioner position number one. We have six questions left and our closing statement, so we're just about there. We extended the number of questions that we are asking due to the fact we are not allowing audience or online questions to be taken, so we just wanted to give the most quality to you guys as residents. So moving forward, Gus, this is for you. What is your stance on the construction of the new county buildings within the city limits? Do you believe it's necessary, and if so, how do you plan to approach it?
Well, I'm not entirely certain which city limits it's being referred to, but I think there is an opportunity for creative solutions and that, uh, above the old Kinsey site would be an excellent opportunity to pursue that. Uh, I'm not necessarily impressed by, uh, excuses that sound like giving water or electricity to them. Good grief, we're building a twenty-five million dollar facility and we can't figure out how to get water or electricity. I'm, I'm sorry, that just doesn't sound quite like a good enough answer. Uh, as far as maybe moving it somewhere else, uh, that's a possibility that should be considered, but it needs to be considered with the full weight of the effect that it would have on our communities. And in terms of Hepner, it would have a significantly negative effect if it were to go somewhere else. And that's something that I would prioritize, making sure that to the best of our ability, we can keep it in a place that the community benefits the most from it as it is.
What is your stance on the construction of new county buildings within the city limits? Do you believe it's necessary, and if so, how do you plan to approach it?
So I'm assuming, you know, all city buildings are, are we specific to the circuit courts? So I think, you know, the belief was that the county buildings shouldn't have been built like irrigants. It was built within the city, um, Hepner's, we believe was supposed to be within the city limits, which was a big constraint on why we chose the position of where we thought it should go 'cause it was really the only one in the city limits that was big enough. So Chief Justice has said that it doesn't have to be in the city limits, which it just has to be in the county. So now the conspiracy theories are out there that it's always been that way and we wanted to move it north. I, my dad was a sheriff twenty-five years. He would have liked to have seen it be up north. If you look at it logistically, it makes way more sense for it to be on the north end of the county than it is the south end of the county. The judges would prefer it. I don't. I prefer it stay in Hepner and I'm gonna work for it to stay in Hepner. I think that Hepner needs the courthouse. I've said it since the very beginning. I don't want it to come to the north end of the county. I want it to stay on the south end of the county. And now that we have a little more leniency on where it can be, we will look at the, the site across the street. But as I said earlier, it's, one thing as a commissioner you need to remember is, yeah, you're twenty-five million dollars to build this building, but we're still in it for the governance and we're spending the people's money. To go and just say, we can spend another twenty million dollars to get infrastructure out to that isn't gonna make everybody in the county happy, and no matter what, it's gonna make everybody in the county happy. But we are being mindful of what it's gonna cost to put it in every place that it could go. So, uh, this, that's where I stand on that.
Again, tough decisions. It's been there, it needs to be there. I already alluded to it before. That one old book I read, don't move the existing monuments, they've been there. And that's what I agree, and that's what I believe. Uh, I agree with what Gus says. It needs to be there economically. We're concerned about that. I know there is a solution for this. One of the things that, as an outsider looking in, and this is my people in Hepner, is I feel like we have either held this under the rug and not let anybody know what's going on, so suddenly we are up against a, 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 like a, a twenty-five, be completed in twenty-five or twenty-six deadline, and we have stalled to force a vote to move it to Boardman or we no longer can do any contingency annexations, anything of that nature. So again, I go back to transparency, 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 and get the people's opinion. And because I, I know the neighbors were, this building was going to go by the fairgrounds. I could have built you from the get-go. They're all gonna say no. And so why was this withheld as information for so long? So transparency, we've got to get together and make this work for everybody.
Thank you. Junior? How do you approach forgiveness and holding grudges when dealing with individuals or entities in a professional context?
Oh, I don't think holding grudges is gonna get you anywhere, right? I mean, it's, that's more of a detriment to yourself than it is to the, to the other person. So I, you know, I, I think I'm sitting in this position where I could be in, having thousands of darts thrown at me. Uh, and I pay no attention to them, so my, my, my comment to that is I'm gonna ignore the rhetoric and I'm gonna stay at work. So I, I just go forward doing the best job I can do and try to stay out of the conflicts. Um, I'll stand up and fight and die on the hill I believe on, but, uh, you gotta pick your fights and pick your battles.
Rick?
Great one.
How do you approach forgiveness and holding grudges when dealing with individuals or entities in a professional context?
So we have to understand there's two different things here. There's forgiveness and there's forgetting. Because I forgive does not mean I forget. As soon as I threw my hat in the ring for commissioner, I could not believe the slander that came against me. And more than that came against my wife. Someone that maybe fifteen people in the entire county, no. Nobody asked any questions of us. So, but if I was to hold on to those, I wouldn't be up here. I would say, why do I want this abuse? 'Cause it has literally been abuse. So no, you gotta let it go. That doesn't mean I forget. Doesn't mean I hold a grudge, but it does mean that I go on. Thank you.
How do you approach forgiveness and holding grudges when dealing with individuals or entities in a professional context?
Well, I would handle it very similar to how I handle it in a personal context. Uh, I agree with what has already been said. Uh, holding grudges doesn't do you any good and it doesn't do anybody else any good. Uh, when we are talking about politics, people often get a little bit worked up. Uh, I know, at least on a personal level I do, and I think most of you at some level on some sub- some subjects do, right? So when we are engaging with people and we are having tough conversations, sometimes people are gonna say things that are a little on the edge, sometimes they're gonna say things that are in extreme disagreement with the way you view the world. If we are unable to talk with people who disagree with us and are only able to speak with people who already think like us and who already agree with us and are on board with everything we already think, our bubble is gonna be really small. We're gonna have a very limited number of people we can ever actually interact with. So in terms of being a leader, we need to be able to forgive so that we can actually be the kinds of leaders that we are meant to be.
Thank you. Rick, you have this one? How connected are you with port business leaders and how do you keep up with industry updates?
From my position, that's a really difficult thing to do, because it's, it's difficult to know what's on the agenda. You just have to be diligent, you have to research, you have to look, you have to ask questions. You have to pursue what your interest is. And if you're not willing to do that, then you're in the wrong business. I shouldn't be up here. If I'm not willing to go after those people, if I'm not willing to get Lisa Mittelstorf and say, "Hey, look, what's going on down there? How can I help? What are you doing that we need to be aware of?" If I'm not willing to do that, then I need to find something else to do.
How connected are you with port business leaders and how do you keep up with industry updates?
In terms of business leaders, I don't believe that I'm connected to any. I am the son of Joel Peterson, who was one of the port commissioners, so that depends, I guess, on how you define business leader, but I would not see that as a business leader, because neither of us have any investments in the port, so as far as that goes. In terms of keeping up with business updates, I think that's something where I agree with Rick, where we need to be connected with the businesses who are there. If we want to know what people think, we have to be involved with those people, we have to communicate with those people, and that's true if those people happen to be working in a business. You have to be able to communicate with them and have them be your source of information, you need to double-check, but the best place to get information is from the people who are directly involved, because they know best.
How connected are you with port business leaders and how do you keep up with industry updates?
I'm very connected with the port industry leaders. I go to the B C D A meetings every first Thursday of the month, as long as I can make them. They start pretty early. And then we, you know, we're involved with all, these, the people that are on the port, the businesses that are on the port, all work to, to, to help and better the county. Everybody's gonna believe that. They do, they work hard for it. They, they work together for housing issues, they work together for, for childcare. They, they, they work hard to, they work hard to just make our community better. They do a lot of things under the radar that nobody knows about, and that's how they like it. Amazon does, you have no idea how much Amazon does for schools, Rick. They do a lot for schools. They do a lot for the community, they do a lot for everybody. So does Land West, and so do all of them. All the players that are on the port and the port themselves. They, you know, they are, they are very people-oriented, and they're, they're there to, to help the people and to create jobs, to create better housing, to create more housing. All these things, once again, these are difficult things, you can't just open up a book and say, "Here it is," it's not that easy, so. But yeah, they're, 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 they're there for your best interests.
Thank you. This goes to Gus. Between population growth and fostering more business and industry, which do you prioritize and why?
Can you repeat that?
Between population growth and fostering more business and industry, which do you prioritize and why?
I think I prioritize population growth, because if we are looking at a scenario where we are prioritizing businesses over people, then I think our priorities are backwards. If we just wanna have the biggest businesses that we can, we'll just have Amazon and Google run everything, and they'll have their warehouses with no people in them, and we'll have a whole lot of business and no people. I'm not particularly interested in that. Even though I'm isolated, I actually like to interact with people. So in terms of my priorities, I want to make Marl County the kind of place that people want to stay, the kind of place that people want to move to. And that means prioritizing population, because population is made up of people, and people will always be my number one priority.
Between population growth and fostering more business and industry, which do you prioritize and why?
I would prioritize on population growth. We have business. We have twelve thousand people in the county, we have nine thousand jobs at the port, so obviously, those people are coming from elsewhere to work. We need to, we need to do a better job of bringing people into our community, building infrastructure, amenities that are gonna make people want to come here instead of living in Hermison or Tri-Says. So my priority would be on the population growth, 'cause I don't think we need to work much harder on industry.
Thank you. Rick?
Go ahead, read.
Between population growth and fostering